Ladies and gentlemen, we'll call this meeting at order at 7:07. If you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll begin the meeting here. There's no need for roll call votes since we have no motions this evening. So we'll begin with special reports. Mr. Leonard, this is your transition timeframe. Do you want to talk about the -- Mr. Leonard came as a volunteer to the last IU meeting. Was not in there as an official capacity. I had finished my last meeting, but certainly there. Absorbed all the good information. It's a part of that job. So welcome aboard as the IU rep. Do you want to add anything, Mr. Leonard?
Oh, an intro like that, I have to say something.
Okay, good.
It was a very good meeting, good experience. And if the board would notice, they do, we do get excerpts, minutes, summary of what happened at the meeting. So that, everybody has that. I intend to, starting tomorrow night, I'm going to attend a meeting. I intend to try to bring back some notes, some thoughts, whatever I think needs, we'll expand on the information they do give us. Because every month, they do give us a pretty good summary of the content of the meeting. But I intend to report, hopefully, close to maybe half as good as what Dr. Trey did in his tenure. I guess that's it for tonight. We do have a meeting tomorrow night.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. For libraries and Legislative Council, that continues with my bailiwick. Related to libraries, we talked about a modification, not a reduction of funding per se, but a modification of service based upon a formula that for the libraries to receive additional funding based on their enrollment. I had a discussion with the library staff at Penn Area, since they are by far the largest contributor. We've come up with a system for future funding support that would be based upon student enrollment in their program. They have a proposal as to how that can detract so that our library in Trafford can provide the same information as the library in Manor will provide for Penn Trafford students. So it will be based upon participation. And we'll take whatever the existing funding is that we agree on as a group, and will therefore be divided by proportion of their contribution. The same standard applied to all three libraries. And also, I can comment from the Penn Area Library, they're very, very much involved, as they continue to be, in the educational process of our kids and trying to coordinate operations, particularly from electronic perspective, which we're all rapidly advancing into. You know, here we are looking at our own library, and what do we see? Not so many books and a whole change in it related to technology and its many, many uses. Okay, along with that thought, and this has nothing to do with long-term recreation, but there is a concern, and this is merely more of my own perspective, we haven't discussed it much, but we might be able to take the same formula of student participation and also use that as a fair marker to determine the recreation fund assignment of money, too. It has the potential to swing shift on the same or standard criteria. Let me jump from the libraries and into the Legislative Council. Legislative Council are a few things. One, of course, the Pennsylvania School Boards Association. Conference is in October, and I would be attending again. And it's a little different because the structure has changed as far as the officer election process. It's much more simplified now. We're all going to participate in that in September. We're all going to have a role in choosing the new panel of people that are involved. There's the president, the vice president, and a treasurer, plus will be three representatives elected at large from central Pennsylvania, western Pennsylvania, eastern Pennsylvania, who will now become the decision-making group for PSBA. And we're actually going to take a role in that, and we'll be voting electronically come probably in the September or very late as the October meeting. That will be tallied accordingly. But I'll deal with that, the finite items involved with that at a later time. Also, they changed the whole assembly process, the delegate assembly, where before we take all the platform items, and we always, early on, we also look at the platform items. We ran through them. We typically could pick out four or five that had some interest or controversial, we needed, wanted to go, and we would pass on, then we'd vote on it at the conference. That process is still going to continue. Platform items are out there. If we have anything we wish to add at this time, that'll be handled in the delegate assembly. But also, the changes this year, the business meeting is now going to be combined in the same delegate assembly. So we'll be handling a lot of the business where you added information we never did before. So any of you who've never been to a conference before, although as we all do, we all go on our own cost, whatever we've all been doing for professional development, we pay our own way. We choose that to do that, and I compliment all of you for doing the same thing. If you want, come with me. We're going to stay at my buddy's house in Mechanicsburg. We'll go to the conference. We'll have a good time. Good meals at McDonald's. We'll have a great time. Good scenario. Anyway, that's the change. It's very important in what we're doing with. I think they changed the delegate meeting and the whole concept of involvement to Tuesday, and they're not charging you. The reason why is because they're only getting half the school systems in the state of Pennsylvania are actually being represented at the state conference. All the platform items, all the decision-making, all the officer selection, they've been excluded from in the past because it was too costly. Now, by making that the free Tuesday, although it keeps us down there a little longer, it is tending to, will probably attract some of the districts who are already struggling for funds. That is most of what I have, except one on enrollment figures. We talked about this in the past. We used to get enrollment figures, which my colleagues at the IU and Dallas will see that later on, to see where we're going in comparison to other school systems. It's kind of a vague figure. And PDE and its infinite timetable is with six months, nine months, excuse me, nine months late in calculating the third-day enrollment figures from this past year. We just found out a couple of months ago about what they were, and we know we're facing another set of third-day enrollment figures, and we're declining through all over the county. I can tell you, and I'll give you a full report on this at the next meeting, that our enrollment figure, we dropped, in our school district, we dropped below the trove based on third-day enrollment figures from last year. They lost enrollment, we lost more enrollment. So now, we're about 50 students less than we trove. The next, and we're around 4,100 based on third-day enrollments last year. The next district below us is 3,900, and that's Kiski. Kiski is also experiencing declining enrollment. But these are patterns, these are processes that are occurring, but again, it helps us in the whole scheme of where we're heading. That's all I have at this particular time.
I have a question, Dr. Trey. Regarding the third-day enrollment issue, you said 4,100, that's us, 3,900, that's Kiski.
Yes.
How many, to your knowledge, how many districts are not experiencing the declining enrollment to that magnitude in the county?
Well, when I give you the report next week, it'll have the 10 years ago, it'll have five years ago, it'll have this time. The only one that seems to be maintaining population and growing is Norwin. And Norwin's been on a growth pattern for probably four or five years. All the rest of us have been going through decline for almost 10 years, and it continues. We're not as bad as others, but we are not good either. We're down to probably about 18 percent now, and it will continue. Matt, do you have a forecast for where we think we might be?
This year, right now, it's 4,069.
Okay, 4,069.
Who is 4,107.
4,107. That's not too bad. Averaging about 75,000.
That's about a classroom or so a year.
Pretty close to that.
And what all, other than the Quad A and the RAC, what all is based on that enrollment figure?
Based on enrollment figure? Basically, some people look at it, if I was talking about my colleagues, sometimes they look at, when we get into informal discussions, they use it for the size of a high school, and if they're looking at development or changes or class sizes, or the potentiality if they're declining in enrollment of AP classes, maybe we can, maybe we can talk about, as an open item, maybe we can combine or share AP classes. Or maybe we can consolidate business services. Maybe you and my district can do our payroll because we just can't, we don't have the funding anymore to handle that. We'll subcontract to you. Or maybe you can handle our personnel issues, or our data processing, or maybe you can send your people over. It opens up, smaller size opens up broader minds for sharing resources. And it provides a good table for that whole process.
Do you think there's a clearinghouse somewhere for the shared services concept that's gathering data for?
Actually, I think you'll probably jump right into it and do that, because you'd be a good choice at the IU to try to use that as a focal point. Because we already have a representation there from all our school systems. We talk informally. We actually talked about having a new, a board presidents at the IU, a board presidents meeting every year at the beginning of the year centered at the IU to kind of talk about these joint issues that we can utilize and create to save money and be effective and efficient.
So that would be typical vehicle that we would consider the NIU.
IU is set up for that. They're designed because they have superintendent's meetings, they have special education meetings. All the key expenditure items are there centered in one county focus, and it's a great potentiality for us to get together and share.
One last question. I think I know the answer is, but I want to make sure. The designations, like for instance, Quad A, were considered Quad A school. If the declining enrollment was consistent around the region, that does not jeopardize your Quad A rating? You're based on the aggregate of all the classes?
That's exactly right. The original figures for quads, I mean, there will only be probably, this could be a challengeable figure, but I think I've heard as much as, only about 25 percent of the school systems that originally were designated as Quad A based on the figure from many, many years ago would actually qualify for Quad A today. All they do is take the top number of schools, and you're quad. So when you, the enrollment keeps dropping, all in all, and that doesn't mean anything. If you're caught up in that top, was it 20, 25?
It's every 25 percent, Dr. Trey.
25 percent.
Take all the schools in Pennsylvania, the top 25 percent, or Quad A, next 25 percent, triple, and so on.
See, I shouldn't go into the high school press room right now. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
I always like to put you on the spot, then if you want to jump in. But I was thinking that's what it was, but I was.
Every two years, they reclassify.
So 4As is for you, then the top 25 percent, 3As?
Now, there's a figure, isn't it based on the male population?
It's based on the male population, top 25 percent, and then female top 25 percent.
Okay.
I think we're ranked, what are we ranked, 16th in the enrollment?
In the WPA, we're about the bottom, we're about the bottom third.
Well, in Quad A.
Yeah. We're far from being, we're far from being AAA only because it's relative.
Well, let me give you one figure. Franklin, based on third-day enrollment from last year, was 3,641. So they're around 3,700, and they're AAA.
About 300 plus.
And if we can't average, can't average 300 students per class, it's going to be tight. That's 3,600 in 12 grades. It's going to be close.
It's based on your 10, 11, and 12 grade.
Right.
And right now, all of our elementary are basically under 300.
All our elementary are under 300, so.
So are my districts, so they're on the.
Upper Sinclair is still smaller than us, right?
Yes, they are.
And any other questions on that area? I'll pass on and go to Career and Technology, Mr. Petrusi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, some very good news. We met on June 26th, and as you know, we had a, for renovations, our energy renovations, nine, all nine school districts had to approve it. And some school districts during June meeting only had six or seven or eight board members, but it passed, and we all felt very good about that. There was not one dissenting vote. It passed for $6.5 million, and they went to Chevron, and they started taking out the boilers on the Jaieth, and there are projections to be done by the boiler renovations. We have heat by the middle of October. And then the roof, I guess I didn't get a timetable on roof yet, but I'm sure I'll be, a lot of it done, too. And they have crews come in and out, and they're well organized, and we have construction update every month. I hope we'll be in your folders, so you can, your packets, so you can read, see what's going on. And I just could, Dr. Kosh is asking something. You can help me out, Mr. Lego. And I think he liked to have a, for every board member, including myself, I didn't get one, a copy of the agreement with Chevron. Could you get in touch with Mr. Gieser or Mr. Elwood and ask him, do you have, by next month, next week, could you have a copy of the agreement?
I'll get it to you as soon as they get it to me.
And also a copy of the construction update, too, if you could, so we can have that in our packet for next week, okay? I'd appreciate that. But it's rolling well, and it's guaranteed savings, and it's something definitely I think maybe we should be looking at. Okay, also, the renovation project, our next meeting is going to be the 21st of this month. That's all I have right now. I can't give you a goodie update because there was no culinary classes in June meeting, so I can't give you. All we have is a sandwich ring, so that's, can't brag about the kids cooking this time. And that's also, next meeting, too, they won't be in school, so I'd miss some two good fiestas there. But that's all I have for career tech, Mr. Lego.
Thank you. Can I ask one question? How many kids do we have going into current technology this year?
Eighty, it's right around 70 or 80.
Eighty, I don't say 81 or 82, I could be wrong.
So that's a little higher than we've had in the last couple of years? It's up a little bit?
About the same.
About the same?
We're going big A's.
Recreation boards, Penn Township?
We didn't meet, we won't be meeting until September.
Thank you, Dr. Kosh.
Thanks, Dr. Trey.
Trafford?
Okay, we met last Monday on the 29th, and we discussed quite a few things. Fairmont Playground, much needed, being redone. We've got the figure of $100,000, and I think we're going to apply next year with DCNR to, and if anything over $60,000, we've got to match one-on-one. $60,000 or below, every dollar we put up, DCNR puts up two. So we're going to be looking at that. We also counsel that for years, we've been taking care of the beautification club and senior citizens, and softball, and baseball, but our fund balance is $23,000 right now, and if we keep on taking care of them, and plus we have the Fairmont Playground project coming up, we have to stop doing, stop doing this contributing, and we're referring it to council. The council, they have new forms now to get the, to give the budget, give them the money out of their budget, and I hope that does work because it'll keep ours up. Because we have $1,800 expense coming out just for Halloween, and $750 expense coming out for the light-up night for holiday happening, Terry was to call. The borough does not expect to give us any assistance in funding next year again, but they are giving us the well money. The gas well money, which is $1,000 down in South Trafford, and also the Marcellus Shell will be $3,100, so we will be getting $4,100, won't be tax money, but it'll be gas well money, which has always been, all gas well money has always been designated for the recreation in every, every community. Our tenants, the playgrounds have been down this year. I don't know why, but the weather, I think, had some. We went from extreme heat to extreme water to extreme heat, et cetera, you know, it was like, and it was pretty awkward. It went down, and I understand Mrs. Zissing will be reporting attendance throughout the whole Penn Trafford school district. BY restroom roof, council's coming to us to put it on. We're taking bids, $2,000. Yeah, it is what it is. It's something I don't think we should be involved in, but the roof is bad, and they don't have any money in the budget for it, so we may have to take out of that $23,000 we have now, too. And malls for playgrounds has been installed. That cost us $3,000 if you had been installed for that. And the BY parks looks beautiful, and we have a geese problem still down Yard Park. Dallas, you're going to start putting the new foaming up, or new mixture or something to get some extra spray. We need some help, Dallas. I keep on praising how good you are, but there.
I was actually thinking about seeing if you can fit a few workies.
Those young ones, those young ones are just as bad as the old ones. They're getting bigger and bigger, too. They can grow in one or two weeks.
You need to see what we have.
I don't know. That's it. Okay, our next meeting is going to be the 26th of this month, Mr. President. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Penn Borough, there is no report. PTAR, Mrs. Zissing?
We met this afternoon. Our fund balance at the, at the end of July was up $12,000 from last year. This is because of increased revenues over the last year, but also decreasing costs of printing, postage, and they got onto a new pension program, so there was some decrease in costs there, too, which were pretty significant. Starting in October, the rec swim will be on Monday and Tuesday nights, not Monday and Friday nights. The school district has asked that we not have rec swims when there's SAT prep going on, or the SAT test, rather, or football games, and Cheryl and company decided it was just easier to move the recreational swims to Monday and Tuesday. On October 25th, right, October 5th, will be the Shelley Proskin Golf outing. They always make a donation to the rec center from the proceeds from the golf outing. Back to something Nick had said. Last year, 434 kids participated in the summer playground program. This year, only 319 participated, approximately about a 25 percent decline. They believe that the weather is a big contributing factor. I also question just declining enrollment in the district, there's just fewer kids in that age bracket. On the flip side, though, the triathlon, which was June 15th, had a record number of participants. They had 222 participants. Last year was 194. Some upcoming events, this Friday is full pint night. It's a beer tasting type thing. If you have some questions about any of these events, I have some information on them. This Sunday, the Penn Trafford Community Band is having a free concert in the park. On October 19th, there will be, Friends of PTAR will be having their wine tasting night. The Bushy Run, Run, which took place on July 14th, had 251 participants. They have decided to donate approximately about half the proceeds to the Bushy Run Heritage Society, because this is the 250th year. Also new is Friends of PTAR will be offering some free activities for seniors, and I had to cringe when they gave the age of seniors, 55 and over. I wasn't quite ready to be lumped in as a senior yet, but. And for young kids, three to nine. And I have flyers on some of the classes that they will be offering. Our next meeting is on the 9th of September. We won't be having it the first Monday because it's Labor Day. Any questions? That's all, Mr. President.
Did you mention the fund balance?
Yeah. Yeah, $12,000. The first thing I mentioned.
Thank you, Mrs. Zissing. PTCF?
Sure, the next meeting, August 14th, 7 o'clock, at the high school library. We would love to have new members, because we either a board member, or you could basically serve on any one of our committees. We are a small but profitable group, or that we might be under 10 people. Last three years, we made over $100,000, so we want to continue working on that. I know Mr. Vincent received many of our grant monies from the foundation.
Thank you.
He does a great job applying. We always appreciate that. This summer, we've been working on the EITC. Jeff Brady, myself, are going to actually go and approach more businesses to get some more revenue, so we hope that's profitable. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. At the executive session, we apologize for running over, but we dealt with personal matters concerning leaves of absence. Absence, we talked about negotiations with the SEIU. And another personal matter, we dealt with employments of staff, and also several items of potential litigation. We will have a brief executive session after this meeting, immediately after this meeting, duration times identifiable at this time. In information, we'll step into information, and this is Dr. Harris's opening control of the meeting. It's his rookie season, and at this time, I turn the meeting over to Dr. Harris.
Okay, thank you. Under information, we have Jason Caruso. He's our technology coordinator. He will be doing a presentation on an item that he wants to purchase for the school year to help improve district's technology. Or maybe he's just checking his texts.
Jason, do you want the lights? Okay, I'll do a little update from what we did last year. We updated all of our switches to gigabit switches, so gigabit to each desktop in the district. We installed production quality wireless throughout the district. I'm not as fluent as the teachers are with this. And we virtualized all the servers in the district. So right now, we've got about 25 virtual servers. And part of the upgrade was we moved to a Windows server farm, which is active directory, moving away from the Mac, which is open directory. Last year, we moved all middle school students to active directory domain, and we're phasing out the Windows or the Mac servers. So currently, last year, we had the teacher server and the high school students still on the Mac servers. So what we need to do next is we're going to remove the teachers, teachers, I say teachers, I mean all staff. We're going to move staff from the teacher server to the active directory domain, which we're in the process of doing right now, and we're going to move all the high school students to active directory also. And what that means is we have a SAN, which is a, it's central area network, and that is where all the data is stored. All of our servers are backed up nightly, and all of the data from all 24 virtual servers is stored under the SAN, and all the student data is stored there also. Last year, the SAN was getting pretty full, and when we looked at the numbers of high school students and staff, this upcoming year, we're going to need another two-plus terabytes worth of space to store all their data. So our current SAN is getting full, so the proposal we got was to get another Dell Equilogix, all of our servers are Dell, another Equilogix SAN, which is, this one is a 14-terabyte SAN. The first one we got was nine terabytes, so we're going to have 21-plus terabytes worth of space. Of that space, about half of it is used for storage for backups. So all of our backups are for half of that. It includes a three-year support, hardware support, and that also includes the setup configuration. And with this purchase, we will have two SANS, and we will not need to buy any more space for hopefully many years to come. That is it. Is there any questions?
Brett?
Yes, sir.
Where would the $39,000 come from?
We have a balance remaining in our capital reserve fund from the projects we did last summer, so we have enough in that fund to pay for this along with the new phone system we're installing. So I'd recommend that we take it out of the capital reserve.
All right, thank you. It's good news.
Jason, what are we doing as far as offsites backups? Do we do any?
We have the NAS, which is sunrise, and serving gets backed up to the SAN, gets backed up offsite to the NAS.
Okay, and as far as your virtual servers, you said you had 25 virtual servers. How many servers, regular servers, non-virtualized did we have before that?
We had about the same. We've added a few with the wireless controllers, so we've added about four or five with those. So we were at around 27.
Okay, so if one fails, it can easily jump over to another one?
Right now, with the virtual stuff, you have three actual servers.
Right.
And those three servers handle all of the data and the back and forth. The SAN is, they don't store any data, the SAN is where the data is stored. And so if one of the virtual servers were down, they would pick up, redundant off each other, so they would pick up and they would keep running.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. That's all we have under information. Under athletics and extracurricular, next week, we're going to ask you to accept resignations, employee personnel, approve volunteer coaches. Under budget and finance, approve expenditures related to the high school renovations for June 2013. Under buildings and grounds and safety, approve a list of substitute custodians for 2013, 2014. Accept retirement resignation, employee personnel. Under employee relations, negotiations, transportation, approve list of bus drivers and substitutes for 2013, 2014 school year. And while we're on that subject, you should be receiving, your bus postcards will be mailed next week to all students. That's one of the things that, it's kind of a system that we like to use to make sure that all the kids are getting the right bus stop. If they have any questions, they can answer now before the first day of school. In fact, most of the schedules are now online, so if you want to know your bus stop, you can please book online as well. Under food service, approve list of cafeteria personnel and substitutes for 2013 to 2014. Adopt a free and reduced lunch program resolution. Approve the milk supplier for 2013, 14. Under personnel and curriculum, designate official raters for 2013, 2014 school year. These are basically all the administrators who are evaluating all the district's employees. Approve teacher assignments for 2013, 2014 school year. Approve substitute teachers and support personnel, 2013, 2014. Approve student-teacher assignments, issue professional contracts, employee personnel. Approve the student handbook, approve the early admission. We have actually one student, he qualified for the early admission program. We had about maybe five to seven inquiries this year about the process of being admitted early, and only one person came forward, he missed the qualifications. Approve conference requests, accept resignations. Approve the new library and medium curriculum for the elementary schools. As you remember, last year, Chris Chesky, she was one of our classroom teachers, she took over the job as the elementary librarian, she has worked very hard all summer on preparing new ideas for next year. And one of those ideas, she noticed at the school board, is one of our non-negotiable goals, was to have every student have a virtual online course by the time they graduate. So she wants to give them an experience with it at the elementary level, so she is going to set up a program for all her fourth and fifth grade students to actually experience it at that level, sort of as an encouragement for future, so they don't get so, I don't know, scarier, so apprehensive of taking a course, they're going to have some exposure. So I think she's doing an excellent job so far, taking over and setting up some new things for the curriculum. And approve leave requests. Under policy public relations legislative, Title II, accept and file information committee meeting minutes of June 3rd, 2013. Under taxes, insurance, and census, approve requests to exonerate taxes. This time, we have recognition of visitors, and we have none.
Okay, folks, with my colleagues' permission, I'd like to just take one moment, this is an extra item I recently just had, and this is part of our curriculum at Penn Trafford, it's actually part of our community. We just had the Bushy Run 250th anniversary celebration. We had over 4,000 of our students visit, visited K through 12, went to Bushy Run last year, more than just the standard one-year project. I was there over the several days, it was a tremendous event, our school system supported it tremendously, from students to staff. Many of our kids came, a lot of it as a result of what happened. Sending them there with an introduction earlier last year, and it was tremendous. We assisted in many ways, and our local media, and again, I compliment the Penn Trafford Star and the Penn Franklin News for the excellent write-up and support for it, because it truly was a community event. Did a tremendous job, you've got to get a chance to take a look at it, and very proud of the efforts that we've all contributed toward making that a memorable event. That's all I have. As an additional comment, again, no visitors, and we move for a German, do we have a motion?
Dr. Tre, can I make a comment real quick?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted, Board, I think you were in your package, you may have received information about the new student bank that's going to be implemented in the high school next year. I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that. Westmoreland Federal Credit Union has teamed up with the school. We have three students who will be working a teller in the cafeteria during lunch. It's planned on being open two or three days a week. A representative from the bank will be there also, so it's a learning experience for the kids. It's also tied into some of our curriculum that we're doing in our business classes. It's a great joint venture, where they've reached out to us to do this. They're donating a lot of equipment and providing some of the funding to get this up and started, so we hope to have it up and running October. It will be our kickoff date, but it'll be a nice way for kids in the school to set up accounts, savings, checking accounts, cashing checks, and get some personal finance under their belt, so we'll look forward to getting that going in the fall. Just wanted to let you know.
Question on it, I did notice that correspondence floating through, that is actually a functional branch of the credit union, and it'll actually be, these kids will actually have real...
It's the real, real deal, yeah.
And they can carry this into a doldwood as members of it.
Exactly.
Good idea.
One person in the area, do you?
Pardon me?
So you, first in the area, do you?
They have, they have done it in other, I think that they have a branch out in Indiana area or somewhere else where they're doing it, but there's one or two other school districts that are, they're starting that right now. So it's, it's a real good learning experience for the kids, and it's a good way to get them started early with that. You know, in high school, as a ninth grader, you can start, and you know, you have your account set up for ready, ready to go when you go to college, so it's nice.
Since we're at it, does anybody else have anything for the good of the order, this particular time? Do they listen? Kind of archaic, myself, so.
It's a lot.
A German at 7:42. That is German.